Let's say six o'clock.
Six oh one.
Yep. Six oh one. All right. It's six oh one. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? I'd like to welcome everyone to our April 21st Select Board meeting. Can everybody hear us? Out on our Zoom participants.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Lee Bacon.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I can.
Lee, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Make sure everybody's on board with us. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our April 7th meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Heather is the motion and Lee Gustafson's the second. Any corrections, changes, omissions, errors, anything going on with the minutes?
I didn't see any.
Not at this time.
I had, I just had one question on the old minutes.
Go ahead, Lee.
And what I wasn't clear on was, is the entire Andover Road, even within the town of Chester, part of the state highway system? Or is it only once you get to the Andover Line?
I believe it is.
Do we know that?
Andover, it's, well, it's, we get state money to maintain it.
It's a Class Two, yeah.
Okay.
I would think the whole section, Lee, but I can confirm.
It's almost exactly one mile from the intersection to the town line.
So, Lee, your question is whether it's still a town highway when it gets into Andover?
No, whether it's at all part of our town highway system until we get to Andover Line.
We'll, we'll check on that, just, just to make sure, but it seems like that is the case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or concerns regarding the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Aye. No, I'm not opposed. I just had my mute on.
I got you on the first aye there, Lee.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to, to do so. Any citizens' comments?
Barry Pinsky has his hand up.
Go ahead, Barry.
You're muted.
Barry, you are.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You're now, yeah.
All right, cool. I got, I got, I have two comments. One's really quick. I go down to Smitty's often to get groceries and the, the, nobody ever stops at that crosswalk? And that, look, in looking at it, the crosswalk sign on the way down is way up the road. And I'm wondering if one could be put closer to the Smitty's on the going down from town. The railroad sign is down there and the railroad is pretty obvious with the flashing lights. I thought that the meeting was at 6:30. I was gonna come in, but I apologize. But anyway, I, I kinda wanted to draw a little map for that, but I talked to Jeff about it, too. It's, it's, nobody, nobody stops at that crosswalk there and a lot of people walk along there and cross the street to get groceries, so I think it'd be nice if we got people to stop. And secondly, I just wanna put a, a, a quick shout out in a vote of encouragement and some community support for Kathy Hasbrook. I personally am not so happy about the fact that she is doing three jobs right now. And I wish there would have been a little bit more, I don't know how we could have managed that a little bit better so that maybe we had an executive secretary in place or a zoning person, but, and I, and this isn't so much for the Select Board, but just our whole community. I think that, you know, we have, we have somebody in our town who stepped up in a big way because they care about our town and are trying to give back a lot, but we have an individual who is a zoning officer, a secretary, and the chair of the planning commission. So I'm hoping that we'll get some people that will, you know, try to, you know, fill these jobs and any community support that we can give Kathy and help, I think would be really great. And I think the members of the Select Board are supporting her, or the members of the planning commission are supporting her and, and trying to carry some of the load, too. But she's got a lot on her plate right now. So that's, that's what I wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Barry. And we have a, we, I'll piggyback on you. We have an ad out right now for a recording secretary for the planning commission. Kathy is stepping away from that position. And we also have an ad out for a new zoning administrator, so hopefully we will get some responses.
And Barry, as far as your sidewalk concern, I'm not sure if it's this year or next year that that major sidewalk project will be starting. And I'm sure all the crosswalks in that area, along that whole stretch that's gonna be redone will be addressed and hopefully with the, all the new sidewalks and the new design, that it'll be a lot safer and easier to deal with crossing the road there.
Yeah, this is, it's just kinda weird because, you know, I, I just, I, I think that the, that the, that the crosswalk sign is actually almost up by my neighbor Gary's house. And then, uh, the, then there's the railroad sign after that. And I just, I just don't think people are really thinking when they're coming down that hill. So even if there's people standing there, they just don't stop. So if there could be a crosswalk sign, you know, like put right at the corner of Smitty's there and at, by Everett's place, you know, that they just might see it. There is one across the road, but that one's kind of in the trees and with everything going on there. I just don't think people see it, but whatever, you know, it's just, there's lots of stuff in town to do. It's not all about me and not getting run over. I just wanted to point that out, you know?
I'll look.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you, Barry.
All right, bye.
It may be better when we get the, get the crosswalks refreshed and repainted.
Yeah.
So they're more visible. You can see them down the road.
I'll look, I'll look, I'll have Kirby look at where the sign is and see if there's a better place to put it.
Yeah, he's right. It is up the road a ways.
Is that sidewalk project gonna be starting this year?
Um, that, uh, well, we're still waiting for right away clearance from the state. I'm a little hesitant to bid a sidewalk construction project in May for construction this year, so.
The offer another year.
Yeah, I, I, that is what I'm feeling like. We maybe will bid this fall, early winter for construction first thing in the spring next year. It's kinda where my mind is heading.
Especially the way things are going and everything, everybody's busy now and the prices are so high.
We'll get very high bids.
Yep.
All right, thanks, guys. Any other citizens' comments before we move on?
I did have a follow-up from a preview, from the previous meeting.
Sure.
I did have a, a comment come through on the town's website, concerns about picnic tables on the green and COVID safety. So the response is, you know, the, the picnic tables on the green are kind of a sit-at-your-own-risk. We, we don't take responsibility for paying attention to who's sitting there and who's not. They're not to a specific restaurant. They're for use of the whole green. So that's what we did last summer and that's what's, I believe, the plan going forward for this year as well.
And they are spaced out?
They are spaced out plenty, correct. Yeah.
Well, well within the guidelines of how close you have to be to someone.
Yes, yeah.
Any other citizens' comments? All right, we'll go on to old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. So the public safety building, new changes every day. If you drive by that building, you can see lots happening over there. Interior-wise, a lot of the exterior you can see, but interior, first coat of primer paint is going on now. I'm gonna head over on Friday and do a walkthrough. Floor, concrete floors will be dyed. That's coming up in May. The curbing in the entrances outside, by now you can see them, they're installed and topsoil's being put in. So it'll start, you'll start to see a finished look to the outside. The siding is anticipated to start the first or second week of May, is the anticipation there. Front windows are going in as well. I will say that some of the things that we're finding, and I've kind of have let the board know this a little bit, but we are finding cost overruns now that all winter costs are in and the general conditions lines of the budget, which are the items that are not bid. Those are kind of on a cost ba, you know, on a materials and cost, time and cost basis. Those costs are just because construction material costs are so high right now. Those lines are definitely going over. So I am looking at the potential use of some of the ARPA money that will be coming in. This is, the cost overruns are directly related to COVID. I've asked Russell to pull out those costs and give explanations as to how they are linked to COVID, which they have done. So I believe that I, I should, I'm waiting for the guidance to come, but I believe that we should be able to get our full contingency back, which is about $100,000, maybe a little bit more at this point. And if we could get that back with the use of the COVID money, that would be great because then we can take that contingency, we can roll it into the highway project. They're starting the design work, or final design, I should say, for the Highway Town Garage. Again, the costs are coming in because of the elevation and construction materials. The bids are coming in high. So we are looking at the potential of doing some value engineering and cutting some things out that can be added later. I had a meeting with Kirby today and we've kind of isolated some of those things that he's comfortable in modifying. But again, if we could get that contingency back and roll that into highway, we would be that much more ahead of the game. So I'm just keeping my eye on when that guidance is gonna come out and seeing if there's a way we can maneuver some of that money into this, this project.
That would be helpful.
I see they got some paving done down there. I'm assuming that's just the base coat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it looks good?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it started, we're starting to get a nice finished look.
I think they did that last year, didn't they?
Only part of it, only half of it. They finished.
Only half of it. The, the other base coat on the rest of the parking lot is going in now.
Yeah, in front of the doors and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Julie, this is Lee. I'm really glad we didn't wait to start this project until spring.
Yeah, me too. While we definitely do have cost overruns because of the heat, we, the whole project would have been way over. We'd have, we'd have had an issue. We'd have gone back, have to gone back to, to, to the voters for additional bond money.
What you were talking about, the cost of materials is skyrocketing everywhere in the construction trades.
Yeah. And I will say, Russell is, they have been, I mean, I will definitely put a plug in for them. They have been amazing. They have, they have been doing everything possible to save without cutting quality of the project. They've been pretty meticulous with quality. I can tell you that. But they've just been working really hard for us, so I've been very thankful for that.
I'm working with their, their site supervisor down there?
Yes, Ed is on it.
He's on it and he's, he's, he's obviously very experienced in what he's doing, so.
And we have that same group doing the highway project, which is great, that same supervisor.
Julie, what, Julie, what time is the walkthrough on Friday?
It's not a scheduled one. Lee, I'm gonna just call and, and ask. I've been trying to walkthrough on Fridays. If you wanna come, I'll just let you know what time I'm going.
That'd be great, thank you.
Do you have a time that's easier for you?
Nope, not right now.
Okay, all right.
Julie, when you're, when you're going, when you're down there and talking to them, could you ask them when they think they're gonna be starting their, the water hookups and stuff? I have the meters and everything. I just wanna make sure that, when they're gonna be ready, so I have some idea, because it may be when I'm on vacation, but I have all the parts that I believe they need.
Okay. I can email Todd tomorrow and ask him. So I'll keep you guys posted on the costs and the COVID stuff as that starts getting fine-tuned. Ash inventory, the committee met one, met their first time. We have another meeting this coming Friday. We, Tim Roper did a great flyer. That's coming out. Amy's printing that up for me. We're gonna get that out and around town. We are definitely looking for people interested. We're not asking you to inventory the entire town. We're asking you if you could do a, do your road or do a section of your road, similar to what we do for Greenup Day. So if you are interested, I'm encouraging people to please shoot me an email, give me a call. We have a lady from, Joanne, from the state will be doing some training for us, for those of us who have no idea what an ash tree looks like, and also how to use the state's app. It's an app that anybody can download right onto their phone and, so she'll be doing some training. So I'm, we're hoping to do that in early May. So if, if you are interested and willing, I should say if you're willing, not if you're interested. If you're willing to, to inventory your road or a section of your road, please reach out and let me know. We have 97 miles of dirt road in this town, so for four or five people to do that, it will be very challenging.
Maybe they can make it coincide with Greenup.
Well, that conversation, except it's too soon. Greenup Day's too soon.
If it wasn't that soon, you know, that would be a good idea.
Yeah. And we are looking at, we're looking at some inventories that some other towns have completed. And I've spoken with Wes Windsor today and got some good info from their guy about the way that they've done some things, so that's moving along. Let me know or I may just assign you your road, so better to volunteer.
That for the ash inventory, is there a link on our website, the town website, to join that meeting? Or where's the information if somebody wanted to join?
I will put that on the, I will have Amy put that on the town's website, yes.
Great. Great. I'd like to just do my whole piece of property, because I can't, I don't know how to identify an ash tree.
There you go. What are you gonna add?
I'm embarrassed to say.
The ash inventory meeting? Oh, yeah. And then last for old business that I have is Fall Festival. Fall Festival, there is, as we all know, there is a new group that is taking over the organizing and planning of the Fall Festival. The Rotary has retired from that project. They are energetic and excited and doing some new things, keeping the core of it the same, but adding some new features. And it's, I, it's gonna be interesting and exciting to see what they are gonna produce. But like any event like this, we all know it takes a lot of labor and effort. They are really needing people to be willing to volunteer a few hours that weekend. Again, they're not looking to you to plan the whole event. Just if you could give a two or four-hour block of time, either that Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. It's different things, like being ambassadors, walking around and, you know, letting people know, you know, food is over here, bathrooms are there, you know, that type of thing. And parking, helping to set up, helping to take down. And again, they're looking for like four-hour blocks. So if you are interested and are willing to be a part of that, Scott Blair, Main Street Scoops is the guy to get ahold of. Or you can get ahold of me and I can connect you to him and to Lee Whiting as well. So again, plug out. You're gonna hear about this for a while, until the Fall Festival. This will actually be an agenda item at your next meeting. They're gonna come talk to you about some of the things that they're planning. The use of town property is a little bit expanded this year for what they're looking to do, so they'll be here at the next meeting to talk about that.
Okay, great.
I think that's it for me.
Does anyone else on the board have any old business they'd like to discuss or bring up?
Not at this time.
Lee, both, you're both all okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I have nothing.
I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Next item on our agenda. Paper of record. I guess we're gonna revisit this again. I just wanted to check with the board members had, if they have gotten some information that we just received this afternoon from the Secretary of State, Jim Condos, and also an email from Lisa.
Loomis.
Loomis, from the Vermont Press Association. The timing of it was pretty, pretty close to when our meeting is, so I didn't really have that much of a chance to go over too much of this myself. And I'm just curious, did all the board members receive this?
I did not receive the, the thing from Lisa.
I received both.
Heather?
You have a copy of it now, though.
Yes, I do, yes.
Heather and Lee Gustafson, you've gotten the information, the recent stuff?
Yes, and I re, I read it and I haven't studied it, but I read it.
Okay.
Yeah, Arnie, I, I did get it and I just wanna start out our discussion with a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Lee.
Based on the presentation that was made by the Vermont Journal folks and other people to the board at our last meeting, I was very disappointed in the tone, very disappointed in the word choices. And honestly, I felt that we were being bullied into changing our decision that we made. And my recommendation would be at this point to never, ever use the Vermont Journal again. I just don't feel like I can trust them. We've had issues with them in the past. So if we decide that we're gonna move forward with another paper, paper record, then I would not be comfortable using the Vermont Journal.
I have a, a couple of comments I'd like to make as well.
Go ahead, Lee.
I think we did have some discussion at our last meeting about the fact that legal notices are also posted at the town hall and at the post office. And also Julie had mentioned, you know, anyone who would like to receive that information in a print form, if they call the town office, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, if they call the town office and ask be put on a mailing list, that can be mailed to them. Any, any information like that that comes in.
Correct.
Thank you, Lee.
And I've been telling people who've been asking me as well, because some people I know very well don't have internet connections, so I've been trying to keep them up to date on what we, we can do and plan to do.
Any other board members wish to make any more, any comments regarding this issue?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead.
You know, I think some of the arguments, and when I said I haven't studied it, I looked over both things. They came very late today. But from the meeting a couple weeks ago and from what I've read, I think that there's a couple of arguments being used in different ways that aren't congruent. And there's, there's some issues that keep on being brought up, like money, like access. And there's some assumptions made about the Vermont Journal that everyone gets it and everyone reads it. And really, when you're measuring something, you can't measure how many people read a paper that just comes in the mail. You can say how many are printed and send it out. But, you know, there were just a lot of things in the arguments that I felt weren't applicable and really it's not a fair playing field. So I'm with Lee Gustafson that I thought, you know, the tone of things, I felt bullied. I feel just on the first read from the Secretary of State's email that it's very condescending in a way. And so the whole issue, we're, we're responsible for this. We're gonna make our decision. And for people who don't, weren't at the meeting, don't know the whole history of it, don't understand Chester and our access and how we feel, you know, we're in these seats. These five board members are in these seats to make the best decision we can for Chester. And I think we were all thinking that this was the best decision for a variety of reasons. But now because of personal perspectives and, and personal gain, people are accusing us of making decisions on things that I don't think we did. So I'm not in a good mood about this. And I agree with, I agree with Lee that bullying and, and condescension is the tone in which we're being spoken to and I don't appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Heather. I'd just like to echo some of the points that you've said there. It was interesting to me that after we made our decision back, I don't know, four weeks ago at this time, that within a day or two, we were being threatened with a lawsuit. We weren't engaged in conversation. We weren't engaged with some constructive dialogue. The first thing that came out was a class action lawsuit, which I thought was an extremely threatening way to deal with a problem that, well, it wasn't a problem with a, with a decision that the board had made. During this whole process, some of the comments that I've heard is that we've been badgered, threatened, revealed intimidation, bullied. And we have a lot of folks very interested in the best interests of Chester from all over the state. And that's from the Secretary of State, Jim Condos, Steve Fappas from the Rutland Herald, Mike Donahue, Lisa Loomis. They all pertain to understand or know that the best interests of Chester is served by a printed paper. Like you were saying, Heather, we made a decision thinking what we, what we know, being members of this town and members of this community, as what was best for this town. Now, the legal part of it, we have gotten our attorney that has given us an opinion, and not twice, it was the same opinion, just rewritten and stuff. And he gave us a conservative opinion and that's what we pay our attorneys for. It wasn't a remand, it wasn't demanded that we follow those, that advice. It was just that advice. I, I have a hard time, even if we revisit this, to go to a paper that has used that type of, now I lost my train of thought. That interaction with the town and the way it was done was extremely disheartening. I just, it, it, I was always taught that interacting with someone by bullying or threatening or anything like that was not the way to go. That being said, I was also thinking that maybe we could do a combination of the two to cover ourselves legally when it comes to the statute. I realize in my mind the statute is gray and it seems like the, the Senate or the government in Vermont does not want to address this issue, even though it's come before and before. And I'm not sure exactly what the reasoning is behind that. They claim that it's not to protect media revenue, but I, I think that's exactly what it is. I don't think any of these entities would be concerned if it wasn't for that reason. I really don't think that their best interest is the Chester, Chester citizens and the, the people of this town. After going through all this and hearing all this, that's exactly what I think, you know? And it's brought up that it was money that was why we made the decision, when I think it's just the opposite. I think we're being fought because of money and the revenue stream that goes with it and stuff. But we do, we do have to make a decision as a board and it's gonna be up to the board on where we go and how we deal with this. So I'm welcome, I would welcome any more comments or direction on how the board should go.
Well, I'm gonna weigh in. Everybody else has and I will, I pretty much echo most of the comments from my fellow board members, but the night that we made the decision, I don't believe the Vermont Journal was here or even made a presentation. I acted, I made a decision on the information that was given to me and what's before me. And while we're here to be fiscally responsible, we do what is, we feel is best and serves everybody in the community best. Now, people can disagree with us or whatever, but it certainly isn't. in the community best. Now, people can disagree with us or whatever, but it certainly isn't, that was not, the financial part of it is not the, the part that I made the decision on. It's, we thought, I just thought, the way the world is progressing, that most people are, are into social media and have that ability. Or, and I know, because my wife has been posting these notices for 38 years. She, you know, they're, all the legal notices are posted publicly and always have been. So I thought we recovered. And I, like I said, I echo what most of my board members said.
So the question still becomes, how would the board like to proceed with this?
Arnie, this is Lee. I guess to err on the side of caution, we should probably start posting or continue posting messages or legal notices in the Commons and, as well as the Chester Telegraph.
You know, Lee, I, I agree with you about covering by posting in, in a printed paper. And I understand your, your reasoning for not wanting to use the Vermont Journal. But in my case, I think I have to take the high road. And I'm not saying that, that, you know, going with the, with the Commons is not the right way either. I still think that the interests of the citizens of Chester is more better, is better served if we are going to go with a printed paper with the Vermont Journal, as much as I would dislike going that route, for all the reasons that I've heard tonight and for the reasons that I've said myself, too. But it, it's a five-member board, and if the board decides to go with the Commons, that, that is, that is the prerogative of the board on how it works. I guess it's going to come down to a motion by a board member to make, and then we could have some more discussion on it and vote on it and take it from there.
Well, I'll make a motion that we print, publish our legal notices in the Chester Telegraph and the Commons.
Lee, is a motion that we have our paper of record, the Chester Telegraph and, and the Commons. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Jeff, Jeff is the second. Now, further discussion on this?
I just, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, nobody can prove to me that the Commons is not going to do what we need it to do. So.
Any other comments or concerns regarding the motion?
I'd just like to say that the way it's always worked, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but when, when it's something that we need, we need to have a paper of record, and then that's our paper of record, and then from that point on, we advertise in multiple areas depending on what we're advertising. So just because it's the paper of record doesn't mean we aren't going to post it and advertise it in other papers. Is that correct, Julie?
Yeah, that's what I have always done.
I agree with you.
Okay. And the other thing that I'd like to just, a couple other things that I want to say is, we also, and Lee Daken reminded me of this, that we are willing, if someone wants to be on a permanent list and mail it out to people, there was a comment made about not all people having internet connections, but a, a paper of record, the Burlington Free Press, is a paper that you subscribe to. So when I read this law and what I've gone and looked at, is we're supposed to get it out to as many people as we possibly can. It's not our responsibility to guarantee that every single person reads the notices. It's that it's easily accessible and we get the word out as best we can. So I feel that if we do the, stick with the Chester Telegraph, post it where we're supposed to post it, be willing to send it out to those folks who don't have them, and also on our website, you know, make sure that we have something that says where, where we are sending all our, our notices out. That is an ample, that's, that's doing our responsibility, I think. And, and I think if people want to see it, there's multiple avenues for people to get the information. And I also want to let you know, and I'll report back to you, but after I read that email, I gave Jim Condoleezza's office a call and asked if he'd give me a call back to talk to me. And I have not had a return call, but if I do get a return call, I'd like to let the board know at a further meeting.
Thank you, Heather. Any other comments regarding the motion?
Mr. Chairman, is the public being heard or just the board at this point?
No, we're just going to leave this one for the board at this time. We had a public forum at our last meeting, and this is going to be just the board choice, especially at this point, that we're discussing a motion that's before us.
I didn't realize citizens to be heard, you said, for non-agenda items, so I, I kept my mouth shut at that point, but.
We have, and he had citizens' comments, correct.
Yeah, but it was, if it was an item that was on the, on the, on the agenda, then usually we do.
Sir, are you, are you a citizen?
No, it's, it's, I think it's Mike Donahue, is that, who's out there? Mike, is that you?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's Mike Donahue from the press occasion. I was just going to offer an apology if, if, if I was apparently, hopefully I wasn't condescending, nor was hopefully the president. I just wanted to just offer any sort of apology if anything we said or wrote, what the president wrote was hopefully not condescending. And I don't think I or anybody, I don't know who threatened who or what, but I, I can't endorse threatening lawsuits or anything like that. I'll just say that. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mike. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would entertain a vote, and we'll do it by roll call because of the three members that are out on Zoom. And the motion is to have the Chester Telegraph and the Commons as our paper of record. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. We'll start, Lee Gustafson.
Aye.
Lee Daken.
Aye.
Heather Chase.
Aye.
Jeff Holden.
Aye.
And I will vote no on this one. So the four, yes is one nay, and the motion passes, and the Commons and the Chester Telegraph will be our paper of record. Next item on our agenda is a speed limit discussion. I know there's been a lot of concern and conversation regarding speed limits in different parts of town, especially on the Chester Andover Road, on that section that heads, I guess, Jeff, you said it was about a mile long before it comes into Andover. And also, there was some concern about the speed limit on Route 10 from a citizen before. I know that we, we are working on this. It's, it's not always as quick as we'd like the things to happen, but because of the weather and temperatures, we weren't able to put out a lot of our data gathering spikes or the material that's out there, Julie. Is that going to be happening soon?
Yeah, regional, regional planning has agreed to let us use one of the radar speed strips. They'll be putting it out hopefully in the next week. He's going to find a good spot where it would appear that people are doing the most speeding, which is probably that straightaway. And if we want him to move it and collect data somewhere else, we can do that as well. But he's planning to leave it there for a minimum of two to three weeks, so we can get some solid information, solid data.
Yeah, we might want it up around the corner, closer to the Andover line, too, because there's another straightaway there.
Okay, yeah.
And then when they're coming out of Andover, that over-the-town line is a 50 mile an hour zone.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I'll have, I'll have them collect in both of those spots. Then that's what we'll do.
And I would think the longer, the better. I mean, if they're allowed, if we're allowed to keep them for four weeks even, I think that the longer the stretch, the better picture it's going to give us as far as data goes.
I agree.
I will ask how long they will let us use them.
Okay.
And I also talked to Rick today, and they are going to, I know that Jeff sits up there on Andover Road and patrols, does, does radar, whatever you call that, radar gathering or whatever, I don't know, runs radar. But he is also going to have, our new part-time officer is going to sit up there as well. He is here really for, for just running radar. So he's going to spend some time up there on each of his shifts as well to see if we can get some things under control.
Good.
Yeah, a lot of these, this discussion that we have about the, the speed limit in different parts of town, it seems like it probably should be handled more along the lines of enforcement with the police department as opposed to the select board.
I really don't know how, personally, I, I patrol the roads and all these speed limits are pretty much set, but I don't see how we can lower, or what good lowering them would be, like, there's a lot of streets at 25 or 30 miles an hour. How much lower can you go?
Well, I think Jason's, Regional Planning's comment to me when we talked a little bit more about this, this week, was you, you have to really think about, when looking at lowering a speed limit, you've got to think about what was the road designed for. And not every road was designed for pedestrian traffic.
Right.
And so he just, him and Otis just cautioned, not cautioned, but just reminded to, when you're looking at lowering a speed limit, you need to really think about what is the purpose of that road, that section of road.
Yeah, that's the other problem with Andover Road. There's no shoulders.
Correct.
So there's no place to be walking safely.
It's not really designed for pedestrian traffic.
And I will say that of all the stops that I made up there, most of them have been for inspection stickers or display, display of plates. You might get somebody, I've only seen, I've written a few tickets for over 50, but I don't, I won't write a ticket for 10 miles an hour over it. It's a written warning. And there are some of them.
But they're stopped.
Right.
Right.
But the thing is, you know, that there's a lot of people that live on the other side that travel that road every day, and even when you stop and you ask them if they know what the speed limit is, they don't know, because they, they travel the road every day, they don't look at the signs, and they just, they're just driving.
I think that's an area where Rick's feeling, she clouds feeling with that area and Route 10, both of those sections. It's that maybe some more physical presence of cruisers, much like we did for Church Street. We kind of got it known, we're patrolling it. He felt that if we could consistently do that for a little while, that that would be what would help.
Problem is, there's only so many shifts and so many cruisers and so many guys. You can only be so many places.
We're still looking for part-time police officers to just run radar in the core program, so I will put that out there, too. If there's anybody who just wants to run radar that's already a police officer or a retired Vermont police officer.
Well, it'll, it'll be interesting what the, the data is, says.
Yes.
I mean, you know, sometimes perceived problems aren't exactly as bad as, as they're made out to be.
Right, yeah.
So once, once we have some solid information about speed and how often it occurs and when it occurs and all that, it would help us, guide us in decision-making.
I, I think that's really important, because we've had a lot of residents on that road concerned because of the speed that people are going. So I think it deserves attention and, and, and information that we can get.
Agreed.
And I, and I really will love to find out if, from the Chester end to the Andover town line, if that's state maintained. Jeff, you said you thought it was.
We maintain it, but the state gives us money to maintain it. Like Route 10 is a state, state road also, but they maintain it with their plow trucks. It's just like Grafton Road, Route 35.
Right. And we're dealing with a lot of speeding down Route 35 also.
Yep.
From Grafton.
So, but that's, we get money for it to maintain that, but it is a state road. It's a state Route 35, so.
Okay.
Any other comments or concerns regarding our speed limit discussion?
Excuse me, may I say something as a citizen? This is Ginger Roper.
Yeah, go ahead, Ginger.
I, a couple of things I just want to point out. One is, although the road was not designed for pedestrian traffic, there are a lot of walkers on that road every day. And all of my neighbors walk up and down that road. And if we're not going to patrol the road unless somebody's going over 50 miles an hour, that's really fast to walk past a walker. And that's, I just wanted to, to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments? Hearing none, we'll wait till we get some data back from our speed strips, or, no, I don't know, no, call them speed strips.
Radar strips.
Radar strips. Doesn't mean they're always speeding because they're there.
Correct.
And we'll see what happens with that data. Move on to our next agenda item, which is our local emergency management plan adoption. This is basically a plan that we adopt every year. And it's included in your package, just to make sure that all the information on there is correct. I guess there was some minor corrections or minor.
It was a couple phone number changes, yeah.
Yeah, other than that, it's pretty much, it's pretty, pretty standard, pretty much the same as it's been all, every year.
We did a complete rewrite of it last year, so nothing has changed from last year, just a couple phone numbers.
So I would entertain a motion to adopt our local emergency management plan, date updated April 21st, 2021.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion, who's the second?
Lee.
Lee Daken's the second.
Who was the motion? Heather.
Heather, and Lee Daken's the second.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving our local emergency management plan, updated April 21st, 2020, 2021, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All set. Our next item on our agenda is Vietnam memorial monument policy adoption. Julie, can you help us out on this?
Sure. This is really something that we have looked at doing for a couple of years. Debbie and I have gone back and forth on this. The Vietnam Monument that is on the green is a town-owned monument, but the vetting of who can be added, name can be added, we have always relied on the Legion, the American Legion for that. We don't really have the resources or abilities to verify somebody's service. So every time we do this, which is not very often, we always just go back and forth about, now, who does what and who serves what role. So we finally just want to get something written as a policy of this is what we do. Debbie has reviewed this with the Legion, and they agree 100% with, with this policy. They helped draft the wording. So we would just like to get something finalized for people down the road to know exactly what happens if a name is to be added to that monument.
If, if I may, to make a couple of points clear, there've been issues in the past about people wanting to get their names on there. The way it's nationally, where most of the monuments like this are governed, they, you, in order to get on that monument for the town of Chester, you have to have been living or a resident of town of Chester when you went into service. And you have to, your service dates have to coincide with the dates of the Vietnam, Vietnam Con-. dates have to coincide with the dates of the Vietnam conflict. And the Legion's adjutant and first vice can check with the federal government on their, like their DD 214, which is your record of military service. So they confirm whether they were living in Chester, which allows them to be put on there. And the person petitioning to put the name on there is responsible to pay for the engraving. However, if it's a veteran or whatever, all they have to do is approach the Legion, and I'm pretty sure we will foot the cost for that. So that's, I just want people to be clear that, you know, unfortunately, you can't live in Andover and get on the Chester monument.
So this is just to have a policy in place so that when a request comes along, we know exactly what steps to take and follow to get a name added onto it.
Yep.
So Arnie, do you want a motion?
Yes, yes, please, Heather.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Vietnam Memorial Monument Policy.
Second.
Heather's the motion. Lee Gustafson, is that a second?
That's correct.
Any further discussion on this?
Just to thank you.
Yes, and also, so should we come in to sign this?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay.
Those in favor of the motion I stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
I'm not opposed, I'll just abstain, because my position in the Legion.
There's a conflict on this one, Jeff.
I don't either, but some people will think there is.
Next item on our agenda is the DRB appointment. We've had an interview with candidate Scott McDonald, I believe a couple of weeks ago, and I thought there was going to be another candidate that would be coming forward, but that didn't come about. So Scott is the person that is seeking the appointment for the DRB for a term of three years, ending in March at 2024. I would entertain a motion to appoint Scott McDonald to the DRB.
Still moved.
Second.
Lee Gustafson's the motion, Lee Dakin is the second. Any discussion on this motion? Scott, would you like to say something? Saw your name pop up on the screen there.
Well, I was doing daddy duty and just made it by the skin of my teeth, it seems, so if you want me, I'm happy to help out.
Well, I appreciate the offer, Scott, and it looks like you're going to be rolling along for a three-year term on the DRB.
Well, God help me.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor of appointing Scott as a, on the DRB for a three-year term ending March 2024, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Anybody?
You're welcome.
Nope. Thank you, Scott, and thanks for serving your town, appreciate it.
Well, let's hope I don't muck it all up.
You'll be fine.
You'll be fine, Scott.
We have confidence in you.
That's right.
Next item on the agenda is a little discussion about the water sewer department and succession planning and a possible, another employee to help with that. So Julie, can you fill us in on all this?
Yes, so the past few months, I have been reviewing the fact that we have several employees who are nearing the 30-year mark, some are beyond the 30-year mark, and will be looking at retiring. So trying to kind of wrap my head around that and start looking at succession planning for some of those employees. Most of them are in a department head position for the town. So, and when they go, goes a lot of knowledge, so I really want to do some good succession planning for those positions. The first one that comes up is Jeff Holden. Jeff is, will be beginning his thinking and contemplating his retirement process in the next couple of years. And with water sewer, it's a little bit different. You can't do succession planning for just a few months. Finding a water sewer employee who is fully certified with management and supervisory level experience is extremely difficult, and if you do find that person, is extremely expensive. So one of the things, Jeff and I have been talking all this through and around, and feeling like I would like to create a fourth position for water and wastewater. It has been supported, the state has talked for several years about the size of our facility. We should have four employees anyways, we've always been able to manage with three. However, it's definitely a warranted position. As I've been thinking about it and talking to other department heads about it as well, you know, there's a lot of times where we need an extra person for little things here and there, and haven't really wanted to, they don't warrant a full-time job, and they don't necessarily warrant a year-round part-time job. So we're kind of thinking about, in this position, their primary focus would be water wastewater, but would like to hire somebody that has general contractor, public works type of experience, so that they could be utilized in other departments as well. The primary focus of this person will be the supervisory or management experience, but to become certified in both water and wastewater, it is a two-year process, it is classes and then, but mostly apprenticeship. They would have to apprentice under Jeff for two years. So that process needs to start sooner rather than later. So I am asking permission to create a fourth position in the water wastewater, and running some numbers and look, you know, averages for salary with, with our health insurance package that we offer, we would be in the $57,000 to $65,000 range. So there's my spiel. Jeff may have something, he may want to recuse himself, and in this time, go around to the audience and say something, but that's up to him.
I wasn't going to say.
That's up to him.
I will recuse myself and-
Just don't go too far.
I'll go over there and I did a couple of things that I do want to cover.
Julie, did you mention your timing?
My timing?
On this one, did you want to hire someone?
I'd like to, I'd like to do it for this summer. Water is their busiest time, really, is in the summer, I think I'm saying that correctly. And so it would be nice to get them here and get them started and underway, and I, you know, I want to be able to advertise for a few weeks, and so.
And where in the budget, oh.
Go ahead.
Where in the budget, are you going to squeeze it out of?
So it's, the nice thing about this is it's water sewer budget, it's not general fund. So that's a budget that's not voted, we can manipulate that within the year.
And we're over on that, aren't we?
We have good, those are both healthy enterprise funds that have the money within them to sustain a fourth person, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a couple of quick questions. To find the person with those credentials, you're stating is extremely hard. I mean, we're going to try that anyways, advertise it that way, maybe, you know.
We may get somebody, absolutely.
We get lucky or grab somebody from some other place that wants to move here.
We may, you never know.
I mean, there's a chance that that could happen.
It could.
But if it doesn't, then we're just making sure that it will work smoothly in the next couple of years, that we would have someone in place, so that when Jeff retires.
Yeah.
Now, the other question is, do we take action as a board, or do we have to have a meeting as the water commissioners?
Well, that, those employees work for the Town of Chester.
Mm-hmm.
So I think as a select board. No, it's a good question, I hadn't thought of, so I'm kind of thinking it through as I'm answering. They are employees of the town, not employees of the water sewer commissioners, I believe. So I believe as a select board, you would be making that appointment.
I mean, and we are the water commissioners anyways.
Anyway, but I, but it's the select board giving me the approval, because they work for the select board, they don't work for the water sewer commissioners, because they're covered under our personnel policy, not a separate, so I think it's fine as a select board.
But as the water, it's the money, right?
Correct.
That's true.
So I have also a comment or question. So as you said, if you're expecting a retirement perhaps in two years, and it takes one and a half to two years to become fully certified, I'd say you probably ought to advertise and hopefully get someone who has experience, but still has to go through the certification process if he doesn't, right? He or she?
Correct, and Jeff is not certain that he's going to be retired, he hasn't given me a date.
Okay.
About a couple of years is when he's going to really be thinking about his-
I see, okay, good.
We just want to be covered.
Absolutely.
And, his fourth person would be really helpful.
Right, eight to 10 years ago, the state came down, did an assessment of our-
I remember that.
Our utilities, and they said we should have four and a half people at that time, and we've been always doing it with three, just specifically for water and wastewater. So, and so it's something that's been needed to come about, but, and I've been thinking about retirement, but as Lee pointed out, it's probably going to be, I'm thinking, I'm hoping maybe three years, I don't know. But the thing is, we've got to get somebody in here, because if we, we don't find somebody that's both water and wastewater certified, it's a two-year process. They've got to come in here, and they only certify people one, one day of the year, and I think it's June 30th.
Wow.
And they have to get a provisional license, work under me, have to work in the facility for two full years before they can become certified operators.
Right.
I can tell you, just learning water and sewer is one thing, but learning the systems, what we have in place here, takes a lot longer.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, to get started, the sooner the better. I mean, I haven't put 31 years as a Monday into this community to, into these utilities, trying to get them, you know, updated and get them in good condition to just say, okay, I'm retiring and leave, and not have somebody in here that's going to take care of this. This is my hometown, I want it taken care of, so that's, that's why we've been talking about this for a while, actually.
Well, I appreciate your work and your passion and your desire to make sure that everything is handed down the right way, that says a lot about your character and your work ethic when it comes to our town and utilities and everything else that you oversee and stuff. So maybe, maybe we'll get lucky, and maybe you're not going to find the person that has the water and the sewer endorsements, but maybe you can have one or the other, and it'll be that much easier to get to that, that second endorsement and stuff, so.
Plus, I can tell you with this COVID thing, there's been lots of times where I plan work for two or three people, and then for whatever reason, somebody's sick or out, I don't, I have to cancel those plans, and another project gets put off, you know, so just having another person to be there is going to be very helpful.
Any other comments or discussion regarding this issue? So I don't, we don't need a motion at this time, we've just given you a direction to start to advertise-
I don't think you need a motion, I just need, I need the direction from the board to get, to authorize me, really, to add this position.
How does the rest of the board feel about this?
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
Jeff, you refuse yourself, Heather?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Yeah, I think we should certainly look at it, and it's an important position, and we want continuity, so I'm all for that.
All right.
I will advertise with the preference of already trained, is what I'll put in the ad.
I mean, even if it's not in both, at least one of them.
Yep, yep, okay.
And then, or not at all, if they're, you know.
Right, it'd be an option, but-
Have the aptitude to get there and do what they have to do.
Yep, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we can all agree that the hard part is find somebody who's willing to work, you know, willing, is take on a commitment like that, so if you can find a good person, you can always train them.
True, that's true. And get another 30 years out of them like we do some employees.
Well, see, that's, that's the thing, if we spread out the age difference, then we can kind of, you know, work them on through and not have, I mean, if we had three guys that were my age, then we'd be in real trouble, because I'll be leaving at once.
All right, so the consensus is to go ahead, Julie, and do what you have to do.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jeff, and I don't know when your retirement's coming, but it's well-deserved when it does get here.
It's been a little while.
Next item on the agenda is topics for future agenda items and any new business. Does anyone out there have any suggestions for agenda items or new business items?
Your next agenda will have the financial review. We didn't do it this time because we had the auditors here the first week and a half of April, so still wasn't able to close out the quarter as quickly as she normally does, so that'll be on your next agenda.
Maybe can we have a report on the Andover Road information that comes in? When are we getting that radar strip again?
I don't think that'll be ready for the next meeting, Lee. They'll, he was hoping to get it out this week, and if we want to let it collect-
Okay.
For two to three weeks, I think probably we'll get, I would anticipate maybe looking for those numbers the second meeting in May.
Okay.
I'll tentatively have that be our goal.
Great. Julie, I'd like to have those data to poke through a few days anyway before we discuss it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
So it'll be a month or so, at least two meetings away before we discuss that, to make sure we have all the information.
If you want to go collect data in two locations for two to three weeks each, I'm not even, it probably will be June.
Might even be longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, to combine the two, so it doesn't have to keep coming up like that.
Exactly.
Anything else for future agendas? All right, next-
I have new business, I have just a couple of quick things.
Yeah, sure.
So I just wanted to congratulate the Whiting Library, I put this in your guys' packet, they were awarded a grant that is going to help them do an assessment of the library and the courses that they offer, and it's a really cool grant, Dieter had talked to me about this last year, and so they did receive that, it's a national award, so very exciting for them. They've got a lot of really interesting and exciting and new things happening over there. We're also going to be applying for a cultural facilities grant for the library this time to hopefully get some work done inside that we've needed. And then, just, again, I don't believe that I need a motion, we don't, it's new business, but there has been a request from Chester Townscape, they are working on the, if you, have you ever seen the walking tour brochure that brings you through the Stone Village and Main Street? They are adding kind of some of Depot Street to that, and they're wanting to add Town Hall. And so they are wanting to use the rendering of Town Hall that was done by Lou Waters for the cover of the Town Report, that rendering of Town Hall. They're wanting to use that. So they approached Lou Waters, and Lou informed me that actually about 20 years ago, the town purchased that rendering from him. So it is ours to let people use. My, my feeling is it's a town organization for a town brochure, they're not selling anything or anything like that, that it would be okay for them to use that, but I just wanted to make sure y'all were comfortable with that first.
I would think so. I mean, the more we get our name out there, the more that-
It sounds really good to me.
Sure.
Okay.
I agree.
Great. Okay, that was it.
All right, the next three items on our agenda are all executive session. One of them's going to be an Act 250 permit appeal, though we did get the permit, and we have it in hand, and we're able to work and act on it and do what we have to do, there are some conditions in there that we might want to revisit, and that's the executive session for that, and then there'll be- And then there'll be some, a second executive session for the potential acquisition or discussion about the old Jiffy Mart, and a third one for the review and approval of our town manager contract. So, I would entertain a motion to go into our first executive session for our Act 250 permit appeal, and then to invite, invite our town manager, Julie Hans, to join us in this executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Lee Dakin is the motion, Lee Gustafson's the second. Any discussion on this? All those in favor of entering executive session for the purpose of-
I've got a hand raised.
Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if there'll be any decisions from any of these executive sessions tonight, and if so, could we recruit into waiting room, please?
There, there'll probably be a decision regarding our Act 250 permit. I, I'm not sure, well, there will be on the town manager contract also, but not sure about the old Jiffy Mart building and what's going to happen with that one, so.
We can put you in the waiting room, Sean, if you want.
Okay. I have a question too, one, before you go.
Go ahead.
I just want to know who I need to talk to, to learn the ropes and find out what's expected of me, and, and thank you for your faith in me, by the way. Julie, should I call you for that information, perhaps?
You are welcome to, but I will plan to have Kathy Hasbrook, who is our NCA. I will plan to have Kathy get you the information that you need.
Perfect.
And reach out to you. Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right.
Thanks, Scott.
Hey, Arnie, I got a question. We're going into executive session first for the purpose of discussing Julie as town manager?
Uh, it's just to review and approve our town contract, that's the third one.
Yeah, the first, the first one is Act 250.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm filling out the paperwork correctly, thank you.
Yep, the first one is our Act 250 permit appeal. Okay, so all those in favor of entering executive session for the purpose of reviewing our Act 250 permit appeal, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right, so we're in executive session. Give us a couple of-